Welcome to this meeting of the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee. I am councillor Curtis Crossland and I am the Chair of this committee. This meeting is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda that have any exempt information. The meeting is also being webcast and it will be available to watch on demand on the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and possibly rebroadcast this meeting as well. Please, can I request that all mobile phones or any devices that might make a sound during the meeting are turned on to silence so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is outside in Tudor Square. So for the benefit of the webcast and for anybody else watching, we'll run through all the committee members to introduce themselves. So if we can start to my right.
Hi, councillor Karen McGowan-Berlyward.
Councillor Nivea Moulana-Paganabazon.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Mark Whitaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Thank you.
Marianne Elliott, Green councillor for Grealish Valley.
Councillor Rob Rice, councillor for East Ecclesfield.
Councillor Willis Marshall, councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Alan Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Thank you. For those playing along at home, that is 100% attendance, so we have no apologies for absence today. Item two is exclusion of public and press. As I briefly mentioned in the introduction, there are no items today that contain any exempt information. Does any member have any interest to declare on any item on the agenda today? No? Perfect. So on to item four, minutes of the previous meeting. These minutes can be found from page 11 of the Agenda Pack. Are we all happy to approve the minutes of the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee held on the 9th of December 2024? Perfect, those are agreed. So on to item five now. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions and to submit petitions to this committee. There's a maximum of 30 minutes for this item of business. Three remit questions have been received for this committee. The questioners have all had written responses which have been circulated to members of the committee and published on the council's website. One supplementary question has been received from David Cronshaw. David is unable to attend today's public meeting but has received a written response and this will also be published on the council's website. So that is the end of item five. Item six, members' questions. Again, there's a maximum of 10 minutes for members' questions. One question has been received from a member of this committee and a written answer has been circulated to all members of this committee. This particular item is an opportunity for that member to ask a supplementary, one supplementary for that question. So Rob, do you have a supplementary for your question?
I do not and I thank the Chair for the response.
Perfect, thank you. Storming through this agenda, this is good. Yeah, keep it up, yeah. So item seven is the work programme. This can be found from page 29 of the Agenda Pack and the presenting officer is Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer. So the work programme for the committee aims to show all the known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings. And there's just a couple of things I'll draw members' attention to. On page 31, you'll see reference to a motion from the full council meeting in December regarding Protect Our Rivers. This was jointly referred to this committee and the Transport Committee as well. They've proposed to hold a joint knowledge briefing with CPL members to discuss how the issues raised could be fed into their work programmes. And then just moving on to page 33, there's a table that shows the additions and amendments since the last meeting. Most of these are for today's meeting anyway. There's a new item for March on the Safer Sheffield Community Safety Plan. And then the full work programme is attached from page 35 onwards. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for that. Does any member of the committee wish to ask any questions or raise any comments on the work programme? Alan?
Yes, regarding the rivers, Protect Our Rivers. It's going on to our work policy and it really looks down to TRC policy to initiate this. Are we any idea when this will be and will it be sort of within this year's remit to get this on the agenda, please?
I think the knowledge briefing will be arranged within the next few months and then it's whether there is anything additional that needs to go on the work programme for that. It could be that things can be fed into existing items on the work programme rather than it be a separate item. But I will follow up with the Transport Officers to check when that briefing can take place.
Thank you. Laura?
Just on supporting children's play and playwork.
Oh, microphone please, sorry.
Supporting children's play and playwork. We're supposed to be developing a joined-up strategy with Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. I know Lorraine's the lead officer, I just wondered when this is likely to progress.
Yeah, I was going to say, does Tom want to come in on this? Sorry, acknowledging.
Okay, I think we're there.
There we go.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for the slight delay with technology. Just to say that I will take that back and liaise with the Director responsible for that service and make sure we can update the work programme. Councillor Moynihan, thank you for that.
Great, thank you for that. So with those comments being noted, are we all happy to agree the work programme? Perfect, that is agreed. So item eight, which is the Tree Contractor Procurement Framework, which is hard to say fast. This can be found from page 41 of the Agenda Pack. This item is looking for a new contract for managing the city's non-highways trees. I believe we've got Gerry and Rowan joining us to present this report. If you'd like to introduce yourself to the committee and then present the report, please. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Gerry Ganton, I'm the tree manager based in Parks and Countryside. So my team manage the 2.7 million trees on council land.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, just about.
Hi, everyone. I'm the Service Manager for Countryside, Rowan Longhurst, Gerry is in my team.
Perfect, welcome to the committee. Yeah, feel free to make a start.
Okay, so the Tree Contractor Procurement Framework Report. This report seeks approval to commission a new tree contract for tree management works on all council trees, except those situated on the highway. Because obviously those trees are managed under the PFI. Due to an increase in work primarily through new diseases such as ash dieback, rhamorum disease which affects large trees, the aggregated annual spend on tree work is now above the public contract regulation's threshold and therefore there's a requirement to ensure future spend is compliant, hence the need for some form of framework agreement. The direct management of the trees, including inspections and decisions on what work will be carried out, will remain with my team. So the decisions in terms of risk assessment, which trees get taken out, which trees gets pruned, will stay within the council, within the officers. So this is primarily about the actual work being carried out and the contractors who carry that work out. Nearly all of the work is for public safety reasons, probably 98% is probably something that we've picked up through risk assessments and so is for public safety or for damage to property. And this covers 2.7 million trees on council land, so that's parks, woodlands, open spaces, housing, tenant farms and such. In line with regulations, a proposal is to put a tender out on the Your Tender website inviting suitably qualified arboretal contractors to apply to be on the framework. So when I say suitably qualified, I mean contractors that have achieved Arboretal Cultural Association approved status, which is sort of a national status. We will be seeking multiple contractors. We don't think that there's a single contractor, certainly not locally, but have the capacity to pick up the amount of work that's being put out there. So we'll go out to, we'll be looking for a suite of contractors. Currently, we have eight contractors who do our work, so it's probably going to be a similar number. And there will then be an element of competitive tendering with each contract we put out. So the process will be very similar to that we currently do and we get best value for money from that process. Based on the past and forecast spending, the tender will be up to a maximum £5 million. I'm not suggesting that it'll cost £5 million over four years, it's just that's the limit that we can spend within the framework, otherwise we'd better start a new framework once we reach that limit. All current standards and commitments to managing the council's tree stock in line with industry standards and meeting the council's duty of care will be largely unchanged by the move to a framework agreement. So all the commitments within our Trees and Woodlands strategy will all still be met in the same way that it currently is. So we are therefore asking the committee to approve the commissioning of a tree contractor contract framework for future tree work across the council's trees and woodlands with an estimated contract value of up to £5 million and a contract term of four years.
Excellent, thank you. I think it's worth noting that this item requires a formal decision because of the spending associated with it. It's not a change in policy in itself and it's something that is incredibly important for us to do to maintain our city's trees. I was out delivering leaflets, I think it was a year or two ago, with now Lord Shafak Mohammed, and I just got in the car, closed the door and as we started driving off, a tree just came down behind us and scraped the roof of the car. So that was one time where I was grateful for Shafak's heavy foot getting us off very quick. But it does raise a genuine point that we would be liable for issues if we didn't maintain our trees and more things like that happened and hurt people. So if we take a round of questions from the committee, I've seen two people indicate so far, which is Karen, Rob and Marianne, if we take all those questions first and then come over to you for the responses. That's all right, so we'll start with Karen.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things really, because I don't envy you, the work that you do. It must be hard to quantify as well how much you do, you know, whether that budget is enough or not enough. I know nearly a year ago, we had a briefing on nuisance trees and I think for a lot of councillors, that's the issue we get on where it's blocking people's light on housing land. I think I get more emails about trees and properties than anything else. And it was just, it was a message to Lisa really to say, can we have any, where we're up to with that policy? And the other one was, will, whatever we put through, if we do do another policy, will that have to be costed differently then? Because obviously that could mean that we're going to change what we're doing at the moment because at the minute, it's very hard to get anything done on a tree. So yeah, I just thought if we did change the policy on housing, for example, then that's going to have a big impact. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll take the questions first and then come back to you, if that's all right. So Rob, next.
Yeah, so I want to preface this Sheffield and trees, not always the greatest. Sheffield City Council in particular and trees, not the greatest relationship ever. So I don't want to say that we leave healthy trees up, oh, cut down healthy trees to facilitate this and not leave them up because we're waiting for a right time. But these trees that we're asking to be managed by these third-party organisations, they are technically owned by the people of Sheffield, they are part of the community and the thing that I really don't want to be, them to be seen to be doing is removed for safety grounds and then just disappear into the ether. So I'm wondering whether within the framework or within a strategy that comes out of the framework, we could kind of work with local artists for kind of public art or utilise them within the Park Service for like more natural kind of car blockers on the entrance to parks? Or we work with an organisation called the Steel Valley Project up in Stockbridge, they do a lot of damming of waterways but also kind of regeneration of parkland, whether we could bring those people in to kind of utilise some of the wood that we create through this.
Excellent. And finally, Marianne.
Thank you for that, Gerry. Just a quick question on managing diseased trees. So obviously you've mentioned ash dieback and rhamorum disease, the council's liability regarding health and safety with those. So just wanted a bit of clarity on like, what's the cost of managing those, like what proportion of the budget? And we talked about this at length when you presented to us, I think, last year and I think one of the actions was to write to the government and ask whether there was any forthcoming funding for dealing with those to manage the health and safety. So I just wondered if there's any update on that. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, everyone. Some good varied questions there to get your teeth into.
Thanks, Chair. So I'm Lisa Firth, I'm the Director of Parks, Leisure and Libraries and Rowan and the Parks and Countryside team sit within my remit. I'll take some of the questions, if that's okay, and then ask Rowan and Gerry to complement my answers with the technical accuracies. So just on councillor McGowan, on the nuisance tree policy, I will arrange a briefing for Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee. Gerry and the team, along with colleagues in housing and in other environmental ecology, have all been looking at this and looking at what we can do with limited impact on the trees themselves. So I'll arrange a briefing for this committee as soon as possible, as soon as we can get in the diary. And then councillor, just to be really clear on what Gerry's asking, the contract framework is not to manage the trees. So the trees will remain within the council's management under the remit of Rowan and Gerry's tree teams, qualified tree inspectors, there would be no change to how the trees are managed. But if I just give you a really layman's example, if the team go out and inspect a tree and establish that it is diseased, for instance, and it's going to pose a health and safety risk, they will do the assessment of the tree but they don't do any work to that tree. That then goes out to contractors and that's the framework that Gerry is contracting. So no decisions on trees will be made by anyone other than in Gerry's team, that is the current practice.
I just.
Sorry, can you wait until after?
Yeah.
I will do another round, thank you.
And so I'm going to ask Rowan to, and Gerry to come in on the public art question, the Steel Valley Project, because I know the teams work, also work closely with Steel Valley Project. And then councillor Elliott, the letter to government did go, I'll recirculate that and I'll recirculate the response. We haven't had any additional funding that's forthcoming yet to deal specifically with the diseased, particularly with ash dieback and rhamorum, but we'll recirculate the letter and the committee can maybe discuss and decide whether or not they want to follow that up with anything. So if, with your permission, I'll hand over to my colleagues to add a little bit more detail.
Yes, so on the question of logs, sculptures and things like that, we do currently do this. In fact, I've only had an email today about some additional large pieces of timber to block spaces where we've got antisocial behaviour and sort of motorbikes getting into land. We've also done sculptures in places, I think there's a few in Mirs Park as well as other places. It's really for things like that, it's finding somebody who wants to do it and then finding the timber for it. Most of our contract work is usually, we leave it up to the contractor to deal with the timber as they see fit, if there isn't an ecological reason for leaving the timber there. So most of the tree work we do in woodlands, we tend to leave everything on the ground for the biodiversity of the site, but in more formal areas where we don't want them just left on the mown grass, those sort of areas are good places where we can do sculpture and things like that. So if there are people that you're aware of who would be interested in doing that sort of thing, if they get in contact with us, then we may well be able to find them logs or places where that could be done.
Oh yeah, no, I just brought it up because, well, we had a meeting with the Steel Valley Project, they ran through what they were doing. Also the work that Stoneface Collective in the Locksley Valley have been doing there, I just wanted to, well, make sure that that was still kind of in the forefront of the minds when we're making decisions like this and just to clarify a few points. But thank you, everyone, for those responses.
Yeah, just in particular in relation to the leaky dams and the natural flood management projects, really fantastic work and fantastic work that we're supporting in our woodlands and a lot of those relate to externally funded projects. Particularly in these instances, there were very close, there's very close dialogue between organisations such as the Steel Valley Project and our woodland and countryside managers who are making decisions on, yeah, the appropriateness of what needs to happen where and the appropriateness based on the site. So absolutely those sorts of conversations happen as part and parcel of a project and yeah, the wider benefit of the woodland that it's happening in. So I can assure you that happens regardless.
Yep.
Sorry, one final point that I realised I didn't cover. Councillor McGowan, you asked about the budget for any revisions on how we manage the nuisance trees or shade. Yes, that would require a look at the budget and there is only a certain amount of money available, so yes, we would need to look at that as well. And also, so I don't know if it was councillor Elliott, or it might have been councillor McGowan, sorry, about the current budget for managing trees. On page 44 of the report, at section 2.3, we set out the spend on this framework of tree management over the last five years and you can see how that has increased and that's a combination of the increase in the diseases that we've talked about but also the increase in storm damage across the years. I think you'll be familiar that each year we seem to be getting more and more wind damage, more and more severe storms and that's contributing to more work required across the tree estate as well. Sorry, I didn't pick that up before.
Perfect, thank you. I think as a council, we do have a duty of care, not just to the trees directly but also to our people who are walking through the forests or parks, because trees that aren't maintained can cause damage or even worse. So in a way, this is a kind of a cost of doing business for the city and I think that the framework that's been proposed is a sensible one for the city. So if there are no further questions, I think we're okay to move to the recommendations. So these recommendations are on page 42 of the Agenda Pack. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? Excellent, that was agreed unanimously. So on to item nine, which again will be presented by, I'm guessing, Gerry and Rowan. This is the interim update on the review of Sheffield City Council's Tree and Woodlands Strategy 2018 to 2033. This can be found from page 53 of the Agenda Pack. So again, over to you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so Trees and Woodlands Strategy for Sheffield was adopted in December 2018, so it's six years old now. And this report provides an update on the current review of that, an approach and sets out an approach for completing a review later this year. The Trees and Woodlands Strategy covers the 4.5 million trees in Sheffield, so it covers all the ones on private land as well as the highway trees, as well as those managed by parks and housing and other service areas. But the particular reference of the document is towards the 2.7 million that grow on council land and how we manage them. Now whilst most of the strategy remains as relevant today as it was in 2018, there have been a number of changes both internally and within the national context that affect how our trees and woodlands are managed, both now and in the future. So there's things like the Environment Act, biodiversity net gain, the Street Tree Partnership and Sheffield being awarded Tree Cities of the World status are just a few of the things that have happened in that timeframe. And so there's a lot of extra things to put into the strategy and some of the things within the strategy we've now completed. So it would be good to reflect on those as well. The introduction of new pests and diseases such as ash dieback and rhamorum disease are now having a significant impact on our trees and woodlands, obviously you can see that from the previous report, and this has led to a notable increase in the volume and associated cost of carrying out essential safety work. The document contains an action plan and there is a general need to update the document in terms of actions that have now been achieved and new actions are required for the remainder lifetime of the strategy. The proposal is to carry out a review of the existing strategy to update it, to reflect new legislation. So it's not a rewrite of the strategy, it's a review. This would be an update to the document rather than a rewrite. The production of a new five-year management plan to accompany the strategy would also be undertaken at the same time. The updating process has already begun internally by sharing the original document with all service areas in order to provide initial feedback on those areas of the document that may need updating. So I've spent a fair bit of time with different departments who all gave bits to the strategy when it was first written, who have now had a chance to rewrite those bits or add new pieces to it. The process will then involve stakeholders, various meetings of stakeholders, and then there'll be an element of public consultation before we bring it back to committee. Or we do it before, I'm not entirely sure.
Maybe depending on the consultation stakeholder feedback, you know, it's an iterative process, so you know, it might come back to committee. More consultation and so on, but I think the plan is to get a plan, get an overview, publicly consult and then maybe bring their findings back to committee for further direction or the other way around.
Whatever works best.
Whatever works best.
So once these additional updates have been considered, then the document will be placed online for public consultation. So the committee is asked to endorse a recommended approach to reviewing and updating the Trees and Woodlands Strategy.
Excellent, thank you for that. I think we often say in this room that our strategies are living documents and we actually have an opportunity to prove that now, really. I think it makes sense to me and updating them, the action plan has to be done anyway, so we might as well kind of prove that what we say is true and our strategies are living documents. Does anybody have any comments, Gabe? Would anybody else like to ask any questions as well? No, perfect, so Marianne.
Thank you again, Gerry. Just two things. So one, consultation, so you mentioned the Street Tree Partnership. Just want to check, that's going to be genuine partnership working because there was a bit of a worrying decision in planning.
Just want to check that's going to be genuine partnership working because there was a bit of a worrying decision in planning committee recently. Which showed a very dismissive attitude to partnership working with the Street Tree Partnership. So just want to check they're on board. And sort of further down here where you talk about stakeholder engagement and then public engagement. I wonder if, yeah, we can make sure the public engagement is sort of really up there. Because I think this is, this review is something that people are, you know, really likely to want to engage with. So sort of group events, maybe, lack events, things like that. Yeah, and just one more point on tree equity. Because you mentioned this sort of very briefly in the overview, but I think that is such an important principle. You know, giving communities equitable access to the benefits of trees where they live. So I wondered if we can make sure that, you know, just addressing disparities in urban tree distribution can sort of run throughout. If that can just be a theme that runs throughout, thank you.
Street Tree Partnership. Yes, I mean, I've already spoken to the Street Tree Partnership about this. Probably four or five months ago, I had a slot on one of their meetings and talked to them about the update of this strategy. I think they're updating the street tree strategy as well. So we have to make sure that they're both aligned. So yeah, no, they're very much part of it and they'll be, they'll be in the stakeholder engagement as well. In terms of stakeholder engagement, yes, absolutely more, you know, trying to involve everyone in that. And the public side and tree equity. I mean, we've had quite a lot to do with tree equity recently, mainly around tree planting. So there's obviously some new, very fancy software where you can go anywhere in the country really and home in on a, even on a particular street, I think. And you can see the tree equity score, which looks at, you know, areas of deprivation, things like that. And you get a score and then that gives you guidance in terms of where you should be planting trees. So that's, that's one specific thing that we are looking at anyway, within the strategy.
Thank you, yeah, that Street Tree Equity Score has got a really good map, hasn't it? If anyone's not been on it, it's dead interesting.
Just in addition to that, so recent work we've been doing on sides of the city such as Darnell really use that approach. To, to drive really informed decisions, to, to improve the canopy cover where it's needed most. And I think it's one of the things that has absolutely come about since the strategy was first written. And really will be key in informing our, the way we set targets and prioritise our resources. Yeah, for the next, next chapter of the strategy, so absolutely really important.
Excellent, thank you for those answers. I think Rob was right in the previous item where he said about the trees belonging to the, to the residents of the city. So I think the, the points that Marianne made about the consultation and the public engagement being really important is, is so true. And we need to make sure that when this is written down, it fully represents what people are telling us about the trees and, and what they want in, in their city. So unless we've got any further questions, I think we can move to the recommendations on page fifty four of the agenda pack. So are we all agreed with those recommendations? Any member wishes to dissent? No, perfect, so that was unanimously agreed. So item ten is the provision of public computers in libraries and related infrastructure. So this item is looking at the provision of the, of computers and equipment in our libraries and wifi. And I believe it's been presented by Hillary. So over to you. When you've got your name up. Excellent.
Afternoon everybody, I'm Hilary Coulson, I'm the head of the Libraries Archives and Information Service. And the report today is around the provision of public computers in libraries and the related digital offer such as software and public wifi. So this report is subject to approval of budget at full council, but we are seeking approval from yourselves as committee today. To develop a longer term approach that has a more mix of provision within the council run libraries and the volunteer libraries who still continue to use the council provided kind of public computers. So I will quickly go through some of the, the kind of the background and the proposal before I kind of take questions. Because I'm aware that there is a lot of kind of like detailed kind of information in there in terms of some of the data that we've kind of provided. So currently there are around two hundred and ten public computers that are available for library members to use free of charge. But that is across the twelve council run libraries and ten of the volunteer run libraries. It's worth noting that over the last ten years, some of our sixteen volunteer run libraries have chosen to move away from the council provided kind of public computers. So that's why there's ten rather than the full sixteen. So the public computers operate on what's called the people's network. So if you hear us talk about the people's network computers, they are separate to the staff computers. They're the ones that members of the public can come and log on to. Our provision also includes the free public wifi and printing facilities with a small charge. And it's worth noting that digital access is now part of the statutory kind of provision for libraries under the nineteen sixty four Public Libraries and Museums Act. So that was updated about in the middle of the two twenty teens by, by DCMS. I think in terms of the report, section kind of one point, seven and one point eight kind of set out the fact that actually there's been no ongoing budget for this type of provision. So it's either been originally grant funded when it was originally put in, or there have been short term kind of budget amendments that have done. The last of which was in twenty twenty one and now in twenty twenty five for four years, we are coming to the end of that. And that's why we were coming to committee today to look at that. As part of the budget for next year going forward, so from twenty five, twenty six, we have put in an ongoing budget pressure of around fifty thousand pounds. To try and maintain this as a longer term kind of piece of work. So that is a standstill budget and actually wouldn't pay for a like for like replacement, of course, have gone up over the last four years. But I think it is worthwhile reflecting that over that time, actually the use of our digital kind of offer has changed significantly. Both kind of post Covid with people wanting kind of more kind of hot desking space that actually wasn't kind of built in when we leased the equipment back in twenty twenty one. And therefore rather than tying ourselves into a long term and kind of like fixed agreement, what we're looking at doing is having a kind of a rolling programme. That gives us more flexibility to respond to some of those changes. So section two on page sixty eight sets out our proposal and that is very much a kind of that mixed approach. We don't have a definitive kind of like end point that we're looking to get to. What we're looking at for the first phase is to actually upgrade the existing equipment so that it is on Windows eleven. So it continues to be kind of covered by all of the relevant kind of cyber security kind of updates. And that over the coming years, what we would look to do is to trial different approaches in different places. And that is based on kind of different usage in our different libraries. So what might work for example in Echolsall might not be what works as well in Pars and Cross and trying to really respond to that customer feedback. I think it is worthwhile noting as well that any changes to the ten volunteer run libraries will be done in consultation with themselves. It's about looking at what best works for those communities and trying to build in some of that flexibility. We will continue to prioritise that replacement of computers and hardware in our libraries where the demand and usage is highest. Because we know that in some of our branches actually, that, that is a really kind of vital resource for people within those communities. But we know where people use our computers less, actually they use our wifi more. So it does give us kind of scope to, to look at changing what we do going forward. I'm not going to go into a lot of the detail in section four, which is around the, the background and the, kind of the data analysis. Because we have provided quite a lot of kind of like data and notes on that. But I think it is really worthwhile noting that of the people that responded to us, three quarters of them don't have their own devices. So therefore that provision of hardware has to be maintained as kind of the core part of our offer. What we're looking for is flexibility around that to try and cater to a broader set of needs, rather than kind of removing the, the kind of the hardware entirely. As such, for committee today, what we are kind of recommending, subject to the approval of the budget, is to develop that mixed approach in our council libraries and the volunteer run libraries who have our computers. First of all, looking at maintaining and upgrading the existing equipment, trialling different types of equipment and then leasing or buying new equipment as part of a rolling programme. Take any questions, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I think for me, this is about flexibility and as you mentioned that. Where demand for computer hardware is low, the demand for wifi is higher. And so one size doesn't fit all. And I think that there's a good point in, in this around that. And also four years is a long time in, in technology. In four years' time, we might not be using hardware like this. So who knows, I think having that flexibility built in is really important. So if we take a round of questions and then come back to you for answers. So I saw Karen's hand first, so if we go Karen, Rob, Laura, that's all right.
Thank you Hilary. I wanted to just ensure how we, we don't always prioritise council libraries above volunteer libraries. I just want to make sure that, you know, how, how do we make sure that, that we're not putting volunteer libraries at the back of the list in the queue? And also those that have their own computers, that they're not left behind technology wise. Because that could mean that we end up with areas that have got a poorer service, you know, and, and then start struggling, finding funding, et cetera. So it's just, you know, so far, I think it's fair to say that all libraries have been maintained to a certain standard. And I'm just worried that somehow we might start losing that, thank you.
So if we go Rob next, I've also seen now Marianne's hand and Mark as well. So if we do Rob next, then Laura, then go to answers and then we'll start with Marianne and Mark after that, so we have enough time to get through everything. So Rob.
Yeah, I, I haven't used the, the wifi in council libraries. But I have used a lot of public accessed wifi in general and it can be a brutally painful experience. And I can see the, the comments in the, in the backgrounds that this system is currently running at an end of life. And if we are to kind of promote a kind of a bring your own device sort of thing, are, are we, are we planning for a kind of a more kind of fluid? But also a faster network and to facilitate, facilitate that, thank you.
Thank you, and finally for this round, Laura. Sorry Laura, microphone. Thank you.
Can I just ask councillor Malana to, to, to look after Laura in this regard?
I do, I need a babysitter. Yeah, I just wonder if we could do some sort of promotional marketing work because it's a bit chicken and egg in terms of usage. If people don't know they can take their own device into a library to work, then they probably won't do it. So if we could do that and look at how we get more people in there using their own devices and ours. Particularly, I mean, some people do have a device but can't afford broadband. So it. In combating digital exclusion, I think. It's also a warm space where people can sit and do it. So the more we can do to promote that, I think it'd be really useful. And I really like the idea of a mixed approach. Because we've moved on from when, you know, fifty, sixty years ago when I was sat in Hillsborough Library. It's just not like that anymore, libraries are very different places. When I was being told to be quiet and everything, they're more vibrant. And I think we need that vibrancy to get more people engaged with libraries. So if we could do some promotion of what's, and not just with, not the promotion inside libraries. Because we want to get it into communities, community hubs, venues, et cetera, post offices. To say, did you know you can take your own device to the library? Do you know we've got wifi? Do you know you can use the, the equipment? Because I think that will may change usage then, thank you.
Just full disclosure, I had my first and only school detention for not being quiet enough in Stockbridge Library when I was twelve.
Thank you, yeah, I'll, I'll take the questions in order. So in terms of prioritising kind of council lives or rather not prioritising kind of council libraries to the exclusion of the volunteer libraries. I, I think that's a really fair point. So speaking to our kind of library systems officer and also our kind of IT colleagues, we are looking to do a kind of an upgrading programme. And actually what we'll do is we'll make sure that we are kind of almost kind of staggering so that we do kind of like a council library and then a volunteer library. Because actually the, the setup in the different buildings will be different. So there will be kind of lessons that we need to learn differently, but we'll make sure that we don't do kind of one as a block and, and the second as a block. Because yeah, you're right, that is unhelpful actually at, at times. I think in terms of the technology and kind of leaving people behind, I think this is the kind of, for me, some of the difference where. Coming in kind of later to this, the decision to move away from our provision will have been made before kind of I was in post. But I think that has been a kind of a positive choice, where I think there have been kind of options that have been felt as being preferable to maybe just the kind of like the standard desktops. But I think there is that point where as technology changes, we should be kind of sharing some of those lessons. So I'm going to come on to councillor Reese's point in a moment about the wifi. But I think there has been a choice not to use some of our wifi because I don't think it's met their needs. As we look at our flexible approach, there probably is some learning to share, actually both ways, about what has worked well in, in the volunteer run libraries that have moved away from that maybe more kind of fixed model. And the lessons that we start as we, as we trial different things. But yeah, I think that, that conversation is, is absolutely the right thing to do. So for councillor Reese, yes, the public wifi, we do get comments about the fact that it is slow. And I think that that is valid, if I'm completely honest. So we are really trying to build a, a much kind of more forward looking relationship with colleagues in our IT service, which I think is being really positive. Part of that is the council is upgrading its own kind of wifi and moving from old technology to new technology. I will not attempt to do the acronyms about what they are. But I know that that has brought into fact that the council's library wifi is currently tethered. And I think that's to make sure that it's not putting too much of a, a demand on the overall system. I think it's at about thirty megabits and I think by removing that tethering, we go to about hundred. So even kind of within that, we are looking to kind of make improvements to the existing provision. But as we look to re procure it, we are absolutely working with our IT kind of service to see whether there are opportunities to kind of, kind of piggyback on what the council is doing for itself and its office accommodation. But also just using their technical expertise. Because actually the demand on our wifi is different, people do expect far better connections, the amount of bandwidth that people need is completely different than when it was installed in kind of like, you know, the early twenty teens. And we do need to catch up with that. And then last but not least, oh no, it's not last, is there, because there's another round councillor's hand, sorry. In terms of promotion and marketing, yeah, absolutely. I think that some of the stats that we've got particularly around the wifi shows that it is really underutilised. So in some of our libraries, there are probably, you know, ten or twenty unique people that use the wifi. So they might use it absolutely every day, but what that says is that we've just not got the message out that you can come for free, log on to the wifi. And you don't actually need to be kind of a library member, you can just log on to the, what is currently the O two wifi and try and promote that. And I think it is around schools, around kind of community centres, but also around using our kind of lax and their kind of like community knowledge to say, actually, there, there is a community resource here that, that, that we should be promoting better. So thank you.
Thank you for those answers. I think there was a point there about the speed of the wifi, which is really important. Because as we know, technology is quite a key driver for trying to stamp out inequality in the city. And as more things move to online, like Zoom and Teams, having that fast wifi. So people can actually go to meetings or job interviews. Say if I can't afford wifi at home, is really important for the city, I think. So it's good to hear that. So if we take Marianne next and then Mark.
Thanks, Cher, thanks Hilary. Did you say that three quarters of current users don't have their own devices? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I am really worried about digital exclusion. You know, there's so many people in Sheffield, aren't there, that are digitally excluded, especially in like wards like Manor Castle and Darnell and Firth Park. So they obviously rely on libraries for things like completing their journals, for universal credit, stuff like that. So how will the effect on people who are digitally excluded be monitored? That's my first question. And then secondly, I'm just thinking about the Future Sheffield Programme, so this might be one for Tom. And then secondly, I'm just thinking about the Future Sheffield Programme, so this might be one for Tom. And obviously the customer experience works, a top priority for the council at the moment. So accessibility is obviously key to that and you know, accessing council services like bidding for a home obviously can only be done online. Um so is that linking, is it linking in with the Future Sheffield strategic plans? Um that's my second question.
Thank you for those. We go over to uh Mark of Mendibila.
Hello. Fifty fewer computers. Obviously with um uh with computing, keeping up with social trend means uh the service has to be, you know, tailored to demand in a much more nimble way than with books, which uh don't have the same rate of change. I'm interested, fifty fewer computers. Um is this I hear what people have said about people bringing in their own their own devices. But is this also a, do you think, a reflection of expanding computer ownership amongst all sectors of societies? And is this a trend that is going to uh continue? Because that would have implications for leasing arrangements and things like that if in another year or two there was fifty fewer computers again needed, you know, if everyone is switching to bringing in their own computers or using their own computers. Thank you.
And finally, Nabilah.
Thank you, Chair. Um thank you, Hilary. I mean, it's really, really great to hear about the expansion of the wifi network in particular, like others have said. We grew up relying on the library, um the wifi at Park Library and Manor Library, so really, really keen for young people to have access to it. Um my question was around uh safeguarding of young people who access the internet. Do we have any policies in place or any sort of like particular training that we give to staff, just to make sure that they they're safe whilst they're accessing it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um so councillor Elliot, to come back to your point, so of the the people that responded to us, I think it's worthwhile kind of noting that of the people that responded to the survey, so the four hundred people that responded, eighty-five percent of them were users of the current um people's network computers, so they were already using the hardware. So I think it's probably not surprising that there was a high degree of people who didn't have their own devices, because it it's kind of catering to to that community. I I think it's probably just worthwhile thinking about the kind of the sample of the survey. Um but I do think there is, there's a real point here around digital exclusion. I absolutely agree with you. But as the world moves more um kind of like, you know, digitally enabled, both the financial benefit of being digitally included, but also just access to services, let alone kind of getting them at a reduced kind of like cost, is never more important. I think, um you know, I am keen, we are already kind of talking to the Future Sheffield Programme, the customer experience side of things, knowing how if the council changes how um people can and wants to interact with us, making sure that there is that provision there in communities, well-publicized with kind of, you know, well-trained staff that are able to support people to do that. Because I do think that is increasingly important. Um I don't want to overtalk kind of Tommy, because he wants to come in. But yeah, we are absolutely kind of making those links. And I think um that that point around the kind of the role of libraries in communities will evolve and shape around that, making sure that, yes, there is a universal access to information, but actually where people need that hardware as well as the kind of like the the data and the kind of like, you know, the wifi, that that we are looking to provide that, because it will become more critical.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's obviously a group of people that, you know, are the ones using it at the moment, so they're the ones going to be affected because they don't have something to bring with them um to just use the wifi. So thank you.
Just just really briefly, councillor Elliot, on the Future Sheffield stuff. So as Hilary said, we are really linked in with the library's approach and especially the work we're doing around face-to-face. So even though we're doing a lot of work on digital, we've always said in terms of the customer experience strategy that digital is about providing better services for face-to-face, not excluding people from them actually. And that's about our ability to allow other offices of the council to meet the needs of people who can't access digital, because they then have access to digital on behalf of somebody else. Um or ensuring people have got the right knowledge and information in front of them. So the digital stuff is important in the delivery of face-to-face, actually, for people who are digitally excluded. The other thing I would just say is there's two different types of digital exclusion. There's the, I haven't got a device, and there's the people who haven't got credit. And actually, the ability to provide really good wifi in libraries so that somebody can bring their own personal smartphone into a library and then use that is really important, because actually that financial exclusion from a digital perspective is is huge. It's just generally people running out of credit in terms of data. Or can't afford the broadband at home. So it's it's so that, on the face of it, having fewer actual hardware, less hardware, sounds like it's a lower service, but actually the reality, lots of people have got the hardware, they just haven't got the data.
And the other questions?
Thank you. And I think that kind of leads nicely to councillor Whitaker's question around the the fifty fewer computers. I think that was a look at our kind of concurrent kind of users across our our existing suite. Um and I think that it's difficult to know what that rate of change currently looks like. I think COVID absolutely accelerated that, although usage of our computers is building back up since COVID took a significant dip over that. Um and I think, you know, coming to Tom's point that he made, it does reflect changing kind of computer ownership and the fact that actually most things can be done on a smartphone these days. Um I don't know whether the trend will continue, is my genuine answer. And I think that is why I'm really keen that we don't get um kind of um tied into a kind of one leasing arrangement for a fixed period of time. And I think when we talk about fifty fewer computers, it might just be at particular times. I think if we had more flexible equipment, such as kind of laptops that were therefore portable, actually, it doesn't necessarily mean that that provision is fixed. It could be that on certain kind of like days of the week, there are different kind of like provisions and different things that we can enable. Um but the intention of the kind of the the approach going forward is to genuinely try and track some of those changes and respond more quickly to them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a sound answer.
Thank you. Um and then last but not least, around um the wifi for councillor Malana and the safeguarding access for young people. Yes, I think this is really important. So when uh young people sign up to join our library, um it's worth noting that access to the people's network computers, you have to either be a kind of a library member or a kind of a member of staff will kind of like sign you on. So there is oversight as to who is using our computers. Um for um young people and children to access the computers, they get set up with a different kind of like access, so they have children's kind of PN use is what we would call it. That is kind of signed for and agreed by their parent or guardian who comes and kind of signs them up to be a member of the library. Um we are doing kind of increasing work, looking at the filters um that go on our um uh kind of like computer provision. And it's not flawless. Um and I and I think it's probably kind of worthwhile saying that. So over the last um year, we have refreshed our acceptable use policy um and made sure that we are really clear that unacceptable kind of use of the PNs, even if it's not um kind of by a young person, actually affects all customers in that library and our library should be safe and welcoming spaces. There are certain materials that are not appropriate to be viewing in a public space and and it's and it's right that we look at that. So we have the filters that are in place um on the the kind of the system itself, and then also um kind of staff and kind of actually other members of the the public that that come and highlight problems. Um but I think part of this kind of going forward is always about visibility, about what people are looking at on their kind of like the the screens and the usage. And I think I'm just going to bring in Curtis's point around kind of people going to job interviews. There is a need for people to interact with our technology very differently. And actually, there is an increased need for privacy, but we need to balance that against safeguarding and safeguarding of the wider community that that use our libraries. So uh yes, it is there, but we would always look to improve.
Some good responses there. Uh and I think it comes down to flexibility again, doesn't it? And trying to make sure that we're in a good place to respond to whatever technology brings i- in the future uh and what the city needs from our libraries as well. So if there's no further questions, we can move to the recommendations for approval on page sixty-six of the agenda pack. Um are we all agreed with these recommendations? Excellent. Those were agreed unanimously. So thank you, Hilary. Uh item eleven is request for recurrent funding from the Public Health Grant for St Luke's Hospice and the Compassionate Sheffield Programme. I believe the this is from page one hundred and thirteen of the agenda pack. And I believe we're being joined by Emma.
Hi, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. So I I'm Emma Dickinson. Um I'm Strategic Commissioning Manager in Public Health and Integrated Commissioning, and I'm here on behalf of Eleanor Rutner, who's on leave today, who leads on Compassionate Sheffield. So this paper is a proposal to request ongoing funding for Compassionate Sheffield, so I'm just going to give a bit of an outline of that. So Compassionate Sheffield is a partnership of the council alongside NHS Integrated Care Board and St Luke's Hospice. And St Luke's Hospice actually hosts the team that run Compassionate Sheffield. The Health and Wellbeing Board approved the End of Life Strategy in twenty nineteen, and I put some links in the papers um uh to the Health and Wellbeing Board papers. And the subsequent work of that End of Life Strategy developed the Compassionate Sheffield partnership in twenty twenty-one. As with life, uh people and communities experience inequalities at the end of life, dying and bereavement, and that's that's specifically more in particular communities, which is Asian and black British backgrounds, those living alone or those in more deprived communities, men and people living in urban areas are also most likely to experience poorer outcomes at end of life. Death is a social and cultural spiritual event that often involves input from medical professionals. And whilst that is important, whilst most people's lives are ending, they only experience five percent of their time with healthcare professionals. The rest of that time is with communities, friends, family, non-professionals. So community development approach is really important to address those unfair gaps. And Compassionate Sheffield is the approach that has been supporting that in Sheffield. So I just want to touch on a few things that they've done to date. And if you'd seen the last link of the Health and Wellbeing Board, there's a really great um background paper of the work that they've been doing. But I'm just going to touch on that, so apologies if you've read that in more detail. So they've been facilitating death out death cafes, training voluntary and community organisations to um enable their own death and cafes, facilitate conversations within NHS and voluntary sector organisations about person-centered care at the end of life, and support advanced care planning, particularly in communities where English isn't their first language. They've curated the Sheffield Life Loss and Death Festival, which there were forty-five events last May. And they've developed a range of resources and videos about a whole range of things, including the advanced care planning. So along with um continuing this work, as I've just described, they'll also be coordinating the COVID Day of Reflection at the end of March this year. There's a small grant in the paper for that as well. So um what this paper is proposing is a grant award of eighty thousand pounds, which is the council's contribution to this partnership alongside uh NHS and St Luke's. So for a five-year grant agreement, continue this really vital work and the small grant to uh manage the Day of Reflection. So that's a bit of a whistle-stop tour, but I'll take questions.
Thank you for that. Um very good presentation and a very well-written report as well, I thought. So thank you. Um I've seen Alan, um and I'll share it out, so we'll go Alan, Mark and Rob. That's right, so Alan first.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, yeah. Um on page one hundred and sixteen seven, it says that um by twenty thirty-four, one in five people will be over sixty-five. And the population of over eighty-five will be double. If I'm still here, I'll be part of that last statistic. St Luke's do a fantastic job in Sheffield. I think we all recognize that. Without them, I don't know where we'd be. I think we've all been touched or had dealings with with St Luke's. Um I note that this eighty thousand pound grant, it doesn't really say when it starts. I believe it starts from us now. Um for the next five years, it'll take us to the end of twenty twenty-nine. Most of it is the the grant is going for pay. I question the the eighty thousand times five, because in twenty twenty-nine, what will the pay be for these people that we're paying now? Will it be enough? That's what I'm looking at. Will it be enough to keep uh in touch with wage rises, inflation, to keep the same amount of staff that we're looking at here? Um I think five years, looking at this, is perhaps too long. Perhaps it ought to be shortened to three years and then reviewed due to to costs and and other things. So that that would my my main concern. An excellent use of money, but are we by twenty twenty-nine, make that eighty thousand? Will we be struggling to to do what we need? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alan. Mark?
Um yeah. So funding so far has been on uh an ad hoc grants basis. So how does the eighty thousand compare with these uh previous ad hoc grants? Will the ad hoc grants continue in addition to the eighty thousand? And generally speaking, what's the sort of minimum per year uh for it to continue? Can it continue on eighty thousand or is this just towards the costs? Thank you.
Thank you. So a couple of similar questions on the costing of it all. Finally, we'll go to Rob and then we'll go back for some answers.
I feel a little bit left out. Mine isn't a question, but rather just a a thank you for the work that Compassionate Sheffield through St Luke's has been doing over the last few years. Um kind of hospice care through, that I've experienced with family members, kind of the medicalisation of it and 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 the kind of the the way that death is is kind of looked at is 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 not really talked about enough. So I just want to say thank you for wanting to continue this work and I think it's incredibly valuable that we as a city with with an aging population, we we do have that conversation. And we try and bring a a loving response to to the inevitable, unfortunately. Thank you.
All right. I just saw Laura's hand, so I'll come to Laura as well.
I just want to, thank you, Nabilah. Hello. I just wanted to disagree with you actually, Alan, about, say, three years. I think an organisation like St Luke's basically currently lives hand to mouth. And I think that they do need some certainty in terms of forward planning. Um so I I really welcome this. I think it's all, hospices are part of the NHS, which I actually think they should be, but that's another issue. Um but I do think that they need some security in forward planning.
Point. Thank you.
Right, I'll come to, I just want to say councillor Crossland, it it wasn't me that read the report, it was Eleanor, so I just would like that acknowledged on record. So uh thank you to Eleanor, who did the vast majority of the report. And councillor Hooper, hopefully you still will be here. In that, I think it's important also to reflect. Um I just, Laura, councillor, sorry, councillor Moynihan touched on. It's too long, isn't it, Laura? Um uh as Laura said, I I think, I I hear what you say, councillor Hooper, around is the funding sufficient and will it be enough in five years' time? I think the certainty is really important and core funding really enables organisations to seek other funding. So there's something about spine of funding and certainty of funding that enables people to other organisations to attract other funding. So I think you're absolutely right. Is there something around the standstill grant in five years' time still being sufficient? But if we give them certainty, they'll hopefully be able to seek other uh forms of funding to add to it and look for other things. And I think uh that brings me almost to the point that if I can just answer both questions almost at the same time, is that ad hoc grants have been from the Public Health Grant and from the
is that ad hoc grants have been from the Public Health Grant and from the ICB. And this is giving that certainty for duration, which enables them to keep staff, keep a team for a period of time and look for other sources of funding. Because it's much easier to say, we've got these core costs and we're seeking further things. And it's an established situation. So those ad hoc grants as described won't continue. Now, I was desperately trying, and apologies, I now can't read with both my glasses. So, and thank you Lisa for finding. So I think there is somewhere in the report, oh here, section 47 in the report on page 123, it says the annual programme, the annual amount is £210,000. And our amount is the £80,000 as a contribution to that. And all the funding will come from the NHS and other spaces. Does that, hopefully that sufficiently covers off both points?
I think so, yeah. And my opinion on the funding is that it might not be enough to cover the costs in five years' time. But that doesn't necessarily mean we should cut off our nose to spite our face. And don't tell Greg Felvis, but if we want to continue it, it should find the money for it in five years. And there is a point as well about giving staff, taking the stress out of, off of the staff a bit. And this should hopefully give them a bit more freedom to do the job that they're doing. And then, as you say, potentially find some other sources of funding with that extra time and headspace that they will have from not having the ad hoc funding hanging over them as well. So have we got any further questions? Alan?
Yeah, yeah, thanks Chair, yeah. If we don't change it or go to three years, would it be possible for this committee to review this particular situation in three years' time? If we're not going to change the amounts, please.
Oh, do you want, I was going to say, I would have thought that if there is any funding issues, it would automatically come back to us for comment. Or the public health team will come to us with a paper to say so. I would have thought unless you've got anything else to add to that.
I think like all of these things, it's working really closely. And one of the reasons I'm bringing this on behalf of Eleanor is I'm on the steering group. And I think my broader day job is working with voluntary sector organisations and the grants. And most of our grants are standstill and it's how do we enable and manage a whole range of those things? And the other resources we bring alongside. So councillor Crossland's right in terms of how we would come back and review the Public Health Grant. Obviously Greg is my immediate exec director. So I suppose I'm to say, you know, there are a lot of calls on the Public Health Grant. And it's used really, you know, judiciously across the lot. But I absolutely get what you're saying councillor Hooper. And I think St Luke's and all voluntary sector organisations would be really heartened with your comments and reflections. Because I think it's a reflection across the whole city with all voluntary sector organisations.
Thank you for that. I've seen indication from Willis. And then unless there's any further questions after that, we'll come to the recommendations.
Thank you Chair. It's also amusing, but with the, sorry, there. With regards to the £80,000 a year and the five-year length of that funding, but also with councillor Hooper's concern about whether or not £80,000 will be enough in five years, would it not be possible for us to say that this year we'll give them £80,000, next year we'll adjust the amount for inflation and so on and so forth for the next five years? That's just a thought that I just had.
I think it's a fair comment, but my understanding is this isn't technically our money as a committee. So it's public health's money. It's one of those odd situations where the public health team kind of don't necessarily report to any one committee. They have projects that come to different committees within the council. Perhaps there is a point of maybe in a year's time, having a, kind of coming back and seeing the results of what's gone on. And also, I suppose, hearing the real life experience of people and hearing the impact that it's having.
Chair, what Emma could do is take away the question about whether or not there could be a consideration that the grant be index-linked for inflation. But that will be dependent on other calls, as you're explaining, on the public health grant that's available in Sheffield. So Emma can take the question away and report back to committee on that specific question about whether it can be index-linked each year and provide an update after the committee.
So the report does cap it though, £80,000 a year in line with the financial comments. So if it does need to be index-linked or that's considered prudent, it would need to come back for a future decision?
Thank you. This is one of those frustrating things, isn't it? Where we as councillors want to secure the sustainability of this project. And inflation does happen. And so in a few years' time, we know that it might not be enough money to sustain it. But also, we do just have a decision in front of us for now. I think that having a knowledge briefing on it will be really important. I'm reluctant to put something on the work programme for a future committee because none of us might be here then. And I don't want to put work on a future committee. But I hear councillor Hooper's point about the longevity of it. Laura, do you want to come in?
I re-vented it myself. Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think we can change the recommendation. And I don't think we can go back for inflation because the public health budget isn't subject to cost of living or inflation. So we'd be taking it from another project, which wouldn't necessarily be fair. We'd have to evaluate who needed it most. So I'd leave it exactly as it is. Otherwise, we could be setting a precedent whereby anything we give grant funding to asks for cost of living increase. And that's just not viable because we haven't got that money available. So I'd recommend leaving it as it is. If there is a pressing issue in future, it could come back to this, a further report could come back.
Yeah, I tend to agree. And I think perhaps we could have a knowledge briefing with some public health colleagues about their view of the sustainability. Because I'm sure it has been looked at within that. Perfect. Got anything else to add, anybody? So the report does contain recommendations for approval on page 115 of the Agenda Pack. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? Agreed, that was agreed unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for that. Item 12 is the Parks Leisure and Libraries Capital Programme, which can be found from page 131 of the Agenda Pack. And I believe Lisa is going to talk us through this. Is Kate joining us as well?
Kate is sat in the background in case I get any tricky questions that I can't answer. Hopefully I've built a cover it, but I've brought it back up. So yeah, so this is the report that is brought to committee each year that sets out the highlights of the capital strategy for this committee. So the report sets out the key priorities, sorry, the key priority areas for capital investment. And it provides an overview of the potential projects and priorities for 2025 to 2030. So it's a five-year look. And then it does set out as well any anticipated projects that go beyond that time as well. And the ask of the committee is that you approach this general approach to inform the council's overarching capital strategy that will be presented to full council in March. So just some key points from the report. So section one of the report, this sets out the legal position for the council in terms of its capital funding and how that capital funding links into the provision of services, including the services provided by this committee. It is a highlight of the key projects, it's not a list of all the projects. So for instance, when we have a quick run through Appendix A, you'll see that the parks and countryside play projects have been lumped together under one heading. So this is an overview to give members an idea of thinking. And section 2.2, excuse me, section 2.2, it pulls together the capital priorities. Whilst it is a whole committee capital priorities for communities, parks and leisure, largely focused on leisure facilities and green and open spaces. And now some bereavement services and libraries, capital projects. And also in terms of communities' projects, it sets out the youth investment fund and start of life programme. So it predominantly looks at parks, leisure and libraries, which are my areas. And then youth services, which now sits in children's services. Section three, as you've come to expect, sets out how the report contributes to the council plan outcomes and considerations for people, prosperity and planet. There are no equality, diversity and inclusion considerations for this report because they will be considered through each of the projects that are brought forward for approval through the appropriate means. And that's the same for the commercial, financial implications, legal implications and considerations, of course, for the environment and climate. So if you want to look at Appendix A, the first thing that I did want to mention is that you will see that we have listed the key projects in no particular order. I must stress that. And also there's a funding status that is allocated to each of the projects. And the first three of the projects are not confirmed or unfunded. And I just wanted to make it really clear for members that this is not saying that the projects are necessarily going to be unfunded. It just means that at this point in time, when the report was written, we hadn't identified the funding source. So when you move down to, for instance, a central library feasibility project, for the feasibility project, we have secured funding through SIMCA and other available grants. On the first point, which is bereavement and coronaal services, we know that a priority for the council is searching and securing new burial land. That will be reported through to Strategic Resources Committee in March. As yet, we don't know how that will be funded, but we know that it will be because it's a key priority. So I just wanted to be really clear that unfunded doesn't mean it's never going to be funded. It just means that we don't know how just yet. So if you want me to talk you through the report, I can do on Appendix A. I'll be guided by members what you want me to do, or I can take questions from you as you see fit, Chair.
I think if we see if there's any questions first, I don't. I think that it's important to remember that this isn't an exhaustive list and it is also a living document. Because I'm sure every member on this committee will lobby you for certain projects across the city and in our own wards. I don't think this is the opportunity for that, otherwise we will be here all day. But do we have any questions on the substantive report? Laura?
Don't worry, I'm not going to lobby. Just that I think it is, no I'm not, just to note that it is flexible and can change. And there are other projects that may be funded by different mechanisms that aren't on here. So I think it's really important it's not seen as exhaustive. And that we respond quite nimbly to other opportunities for funding that we may not be aware of or might just be in the back of our heads.
Absolutely, that is really important. So as I mentioned, the green and open spaces improvement projects and the access and environment improvements encompass such a large number of projects within there. And each of the local area committees, ward members, this committee, others as necessary, will be involved in decisions around those projects. As in the, as you will with the leisure investment around the facilities. So, you know, when we get to a position where we might have some designs to consult on, then again, they will be coming back to committee. So yeah, absolutely right councillor Moynihan, this is an indicative list and it is flexible. And we might secure additional funding, capital funding, and then we can bring more projects forward.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody else have any further comments or questions on this? No, excellent. So the report contains recommendations for approval on page 134 of the Agenda Pack. Are we all agreed on those recommendations? Excellent, we are unanimously agreed. On to item 13 of the agenda. This is procurement of the hedge cutting contract, which can be found from page 145 of the agenda. And as the title says, this is looking at the hedge cutting in our city. And I believe we're joined by Simon, who will run us through it. Over to you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I don't plan on going through the report in detail because it's fairly similar to the work that Gerry's done in that it's asking for approval to commission a three-year plus one-year extension to contract or contracts with an estimated value of up to £420,000, based on our current spend for the hedge maintenance services across the council's park and public realm space. So this report seeks approval to retender this hedge maintenance contract that supports parks and countryside to deliver hedge maintenance across Sheffield's public realm, as the current contract is due to expire in the spring of 2025. Based on our current spend, the contract should total approximately £420,000. The work's currently delivered by two partners across approximately 14 estates within the city. And we'll be looking to undertake a tender to deliver the hedge maintenance work, which we have completed in a similar fashion for a number of years. We predominantly complete the work to maintain access, to keep sightlines strong and to ensure the environment in which people live is safe for all and provides quality habitats for our wildlife. So I'm looking to ask the committee to approve the commissioning of this tender.
Very good succinct reporting there. I've seen, oh, now two indications to speak, three, racking them up. So if we go, Rob, Marianne, Van Karen, that's all right?
I would like to make comment on the organisation of this agenda to kind of get the trees and hedges bookending this meeting in a kind of a nice green sandwich. So I do enjoy that. I would just like to ask, because obviously we've got the tenders out for the tree management. And there is also the tenders going out for the hedge row management. Whether, and there might be a very simple advance to this. I'm not involved in financial contracts and I really, at some point, accept I should never be. But I'd like to ask, was there any consideration as to merging these? Or kind of offering a tender to kind of combine these two services to try and simplify kind of relationships with contractors?
Thank you for that. We'll take all the questions first, if that's okay. So Marianne next.
Thanks, Simon. So I was just wondering, because you obviously mentioned habitats and the opportunities there and, you know, the importance in terms of biodiversity that hedges provide. So what opportunities are there in this sort of, before the tender, to sort of work into the contract for like a nature recovery approach to hedge management as opposed to just maintenance or cutting? So for example, enhancing and protecting and recovering hedges. So how can we influence that? And also I'm just thinking about housing land, because that's probably where a lot of the hedges are. So can the housing committee also have input into it? Because I think they'd probably like to influence that as well in terms of opportunities for increasing biodiversity. Thank you.
And Karen?
Yeah, mine's just for my information, to be honest. It's just, I'm just trying to work out where this contract covers, because between highways and this. So if there's a hedge that's bordering a road that's also a boundary. So I'm thinking of Burley Lane, for example, that I've just asked to be cut back. So I'm thinking of Burley Lane, for example, that I've just asked to be cut back and has been cut back because it's a school, children use it and it's a narrow path. But it borders onto parks and countryside land and onto public highway. I sent that through to Streetshead and I'm just trying to work out what this contract covers and what they take into account, talking about what you've just said, about, you know, protection of wildlife and all the rest of it. And I just wondered how that'll work, it was in my head. Thanks.
Right, over to you.
So I'm going to start by answering councillor Lisa's question and then hand over to Simon. We can't do the same procurements because the qualifications for the contractors are different. So as, if you remember in Gerry's report, he talks about working to certain AWP standards and qualifications. That's different for the hedge cutting. They will have their qualifications and risk assessments with the different, different jobs. So yeah, we can't do them together. Yeah, yeah. If we could, we would, but we can't. Yeah, so that's really good. Habitats, nature recovery and answering, protecting. Can housing committee have input into this decision? Probably not, because this is a decision about the contract. But in terms of the specification of how housing, the public realm in housing is managed, then yes, they absolutely can through the, through the colleagues in housing. So just to give you a little bit of background, Simon and the team work to a service level agreement given to them by housing. So negotiate a price for that and then Simon's team carry out the work. So that specification can absolutely be designed and have input from colleagues on housing committee.
Okay, so how can we make that happen? Well, you do that liaising, Simon. Thank you.
I'll take that with.
Yeah, and I can also add a little bit there. So I have teams that work across the city. And so my area managers manage various different estates from various different bits of the city. And they have liaison meetings with housing officers. And so there are opportunities on a monthly basis to feed into that and those expectations. So they have monthly catch-ups with their, with their local teams, at which point they've got the opportunity to influence what, what the environment that they're, they're kind of working in covers. So there's absolutely opportunity for building that into each and every area. The work is held on a computer system called Confirm, at which point that's the work that's carried out by my teams. And so that can be updated and costed appropriately for, for all of the work. I've just been doing a bunch of work, which Lisa has just referred to, around the, the service level agreement with housing. Within there, we have elements of how we will consider and develop our kind of biodiversity aspirations as part of that. So it's within the, the service level agreement to be able to, to look at what we can do.
And whether or not that specification's been agreed through housing committee, I will take away to the director, Chris Ellis, and the director of housing to ask the question about how that's been engaged, how committee have been engaged in putting into that specification.
Thank you. Just going back to the contract, obviously, when the services are agreed, will there be some scope in there for what we were just talking about with regards to habitat and natural? Yeah, okay.
So absolutely. So the actual content of the tender hasn't yet been developed. So it's absolutely part of it. All of the decisions which we make within parks and kind of countryside have an element of what's the impact? How do we consider our green spaces and make them better for everyone that's utilizing it? It's a difficult balance of kind of different opinions and different aspects to it. And so it's about getting that, that happy, happy medium there. So absolutely, it's part, it will be part of the tender.
I think it's fair to say, just, just to what Simon said, is we can agree the tender, what we put in the specification and what we put in the contract for the contractors to, the work for them to actually do is absolutely within your gift and housing committee gift as well. So we can design the specification and essentially the contractor will have to deliver that. And then we manage their output.
Thank you. I'm just going to repeat the fact that this, the decision in front of us today is more of a sort of day-to-day businesses, business decision because of the costs associated with it. But there is definitely an opportunity to change policy if that's what different committees in the council do want at a future date as well. I suspect you might be going to a housing policy committee knowledge briefing at some point soon. And councillor McGowan's point as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just about to kind of pick up on that. So if there was a simple answer, I'd love to give it to you. It is literally done on a site-by-site basis. It will be done through our mapping and land ownership. And it will be dependent on all sorts of bits and pieces, such as footpaths with lighting across it are an AMI accountable. Without lighting, it will be a parks accountable. So to be able to kind of pick on each and every single one is an impossible task. But yeah, absolutely. And there's an element, I guess, hedges will be, depending on which side of it, depends who's accountable for doing it. It's as interesting as that can be on occasions.
Yeah, just to follow on from that, as to, for instance, if it is a highway hedge, let's call it a highway hedge, there will be a contract through the AMI contract for cutting those. But they will work to the same biodiversity standard. So for instance, hedge cutting doesn't happen during the bird nesting season, for just as a very basic example. If you're ever in doubt as to what the designation of the land was, if you drop a note to Streetshead and to Parks and Countryside, then we will, we will pick it up. We'll look at the, look at the system and see what the computer says and then we'll pick it up.
Excellent, thank you for that. If there's no further questions, I think we'll turn to the recommendations on page 147 of the agenda pack. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? We are all agreed. That was agreed unanimously. Again, yeah, that brings us to the end of our agenda. So we did keep the speed up. So thank you, everybody, for attending today. Hope you have a safe journey home. Thanks.